The first announcement. This meeting is being recorded by the recording secretary via Zoom in the event that a connection is lost at any time during the meeting and a device is being used to, as by, is being used by the recording clerk for the purposes of taking minutes. Is there anyone else that would like to be present that would like to record? I have just asked for that. Is there anybody else? Next.
Okay. Dick, can you read the next one? My computer is acting up.
I'll read the next one. Okay. Board of Selectmen videos on demand. The Board of Selectmen meetings can be viewed by going to the watch cable video on demand icon on the homepage of the Topsfield Town website.
The next one is the, please check the town website for helpful information regarding COVID-19 under news and announcements, or go directly to the COVID-19 page at www.topsfield-ma.gov. Do you want to take the next one, Dick?
I will take the next one, yes. Fourth quarter tax bills and application exemptions. Board of Selectmen has adopted the local options to extend the real estate and personal property tax bills due date from May 1st to June 1st, and to extend the due date for applications for exemptions and deferrals from April 1st, 2020 until the due date no later than June 1st, 2020. Please go to the Topsfield website for more information.
Goods, metals, curbside collection. This spring collection of white goods, metals will be held on your regular collection day, May 13th, 14th, and 15th. Items must be curbside by 7:00 a.m. Please go to the town website for more information.
Northeast mosquito control. Representatives from Northeast Mosquito Control will be in the area during the next few weeks placing surveillance traps in preparation for mosquito season. Please see the Health Department webpage for more information on the Northeast Mosquito Control Best Management Practices Plan for Topsfield at the Topsfield website.
Town Hall Summer Hours. Beginning Friday, May 22nd, Memorial Day weekend, the Town Hall will be closed for Fridays for the summer through Friday, September 4th, Labor Day weekend. The Town Hall Summer Hours will be as follows. Mondays, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesdays through Thursdays, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Fridays will be closed.
Selectmen meeting on Monday, on Monday, May 18th, Monday, June 1st, and Monday, June 15th, there will be Board of Selectmen meetings at 7:00 p.m. The Board will hold a working session on Wednesday, that's this Wednesday, May 13th, and on Thursday, June 11th, at 3:00 p.m. All meetings and work sessions will be conducted via using Zoom until further notice. All information to join these meetings is listed on each agenda posting on the Town website.
Great. Thank you very much, Dick. Thank you very much, Lynn. Saved my little, saved my voice a little bit there. I would now like to go to the next item. Item four, citizens' questions and comments, and ask if there is anyone online with us who wishes to make a comment or ask a question. Met with silence, we will move on. First thing we will do is vote approval of minutes. And Lynn, as clerk, would you be kind enough to read the motion and ask questions?
Okay. The first motion is to approve the minutes of the work session held Friday, April 17th, 2020. I know this one came out very late today. I wasn't even sure it was going to make today's meeting, so I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but there's the motion.
Second.
So we have a second for Mr. Gant. Is there any discussion?
Well, did everybody have a chance to look at it? I think.
I did.
I did.
Okay.
Great.
Any discussion, any further discussion?
I have no comment.
Hearing none, then I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. On to the next, Lynn, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting held Monday, May 4th, 2020.
Second.
Here, first and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote to approve. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. We will now move on to new business and item one, Proctor and Stewart Elementary Schools' project funding agreement. Is this something, Kevin, that you should sort of bring us up to speed on?
Sure. I'll just give a quick frame, and then I'll actually hand it off to Steve Cooper from the schools, who's online with us, who's been intimately involved in the project. So over the last few months, there's, through the MSBA process, closeout of the two elementary school roofs, the schools did a fantastic job in applying to MSBA for additional considerations on some initial items that were excluded. And MSBA came back with almost universal approval on those items, which means that there is going to be a contribution to offset some of those costs by MSBA. I think it's 53%. I'm sure Steve can correct me on that if I'm off on the percentage, but that is the genesis of this, and as an amendment to the contract, it needs board approval. So Steve, I'll hand it over to you to fill in, fill in the blanks.
Good evening. Yes, as Kevin was explaining, this is essentially just a housekeeping document. It's coming to the Board based on the MSBA project legal consent, which directs this document to be signed and others similar by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. So again, this is more of a housekeeping document that is collecting some adjustments that were made that fell into the town's favor after we had requested consideration, or reconsideration, I should say, and also in a rebalancing of schedule of values of the two projects after the final bids were received. So this is one of the documents that the MSBA uses for the closeout process. Final payments have been made to the contractor, so we are essentially embarking on what begins the 10-month audit process of the project by the MSBA. And then upon completion of this 10-month cycle, the town will receive its final and last reimbursement, but we have received all of our reimbursements that we have applied for up to date, and essentially one remaining.
And that remaining is about 5%, Steve?
Yeah, approximately. Again, because it follows post-audit, you know, getting an exact figure is, you know, they prefer to, you know, we can, we can generalize the value, but being post-audit, they prefer to, you know, wait to see if anything, you know, we don't expect it to be, but anything comes out of the audit that requires any adjustments to the numbers that, you know, could impact or may not impact the final reimbursement value.
And what was the total cost of the project, Steve, after all is said and done?
Actually, I don't have those figures in front of me, but, but we, safe to say, we did, we did close the project under budget.
Thank you.
I think the cost of the budget was something like $7 million, wasn't it, Dick?
Yeah.
But Steve, I got, I got a question for you. It seems to me, after reading the documents, and I know that in a project of this size, there are obviously normally adjustments made at the end, and it strikes me that what I'm hearing and what I've read is that they've agreed to include things in the project that were not originally approved, as I understand it. And as a result of that, we wind, we're going to wind up with reimbursements from a state that might not have been included in the beginning. Is that true?
Yes. No, that's, that's absolutely correct. And, you know, essentially the way the process works is some of these were change order related, and at, at initial review, if, if they thought they interpreted the scope of the work related to a particular change order correctly, they would basically make a first judgment on that change order, whether it be reimbursable or not reimbursable. Upon getting this initial review, we took exception with a number of their initial interpretations and provided additional context, which, and submitted the same. And then following their review of that additional information, they, you know, they reversed their decision and, and found, found approval of these in the town's favor.
One more question, and then I'll be quiet. Steve, did we get, did we, the town of Topsfield, get out of this project what we wanted to get out of it, or did we have to cut corners to stay within budget?
Well, I guess, I would say, you know, we, we didn't get everything we had wished for, so there's, you know, some, some work that, you know, remains, but we're going to, we're going to work on, on addressing that as time goes. But, you know, once the project was up and running with the budget that we were, were able to secure, I think that overall, the job went fantastic. We had great partners with our general contractor, our project management firm, our consultants. So it was a good team, and, you know, one of the better ones that I've worked on, and, you know, and I think the finished product, you know, you know, works well, shows well, and, you know, just all in all turned out well.
This is Lynn. What was the dollar value of this first amendment? What is it that we're actually approving for a dollar value?
Lynn, I don't have that document in front of me.
It was just hard to tell without knowing the before and after, because it says, you know, section 2.1 was deleted and replaced with the following language, so I, I couldn't compare to say what was it to start with and what is it now with the amendment.
So that, that section, that particular section, Lynn, has what's referred to as the data that they put in there is the estimated maximum total facilities grant, and then there's what they would consider potentially more than that, beyond that. And comparing what was in the original agreement to what is in this particular agreement, the, the dollars for Proctor School are the same, for Stewart School are about $50,000 less than the agreement that we entered back in, in 2017. I think that was, yeah, I think it was in May, May 2017. So it's slightly less on what they consider the maximum. And I couldn't see any other differences in the language, although they, they did replace it in whole. I didn't compare word for word, but it was basically the same, except for those dollar amounts.
So it's $50,000 less than the maximum, but more than they originally agreed to provide us?
So $50,000 less than, first of all, they don't necessarily agree to provide us with anything. They tell us what the maximum amount would be. As you, as you know, from, isn't that writing? It's one of two things, the lesser of, everything is lesser of always, 41.1% or the dollar amounts that they put in there. And those dollar amounts, in the case of Stewart School, again, was something like about $50,000 less.
So is this a positive or a negative?
Negative. Not that, not that we would have gotten that anyway, but we could have, before that, we, based on what we did in 2017, it's, the agreement said we could get as much as, specifically in the case of, of Stewart School, it said we could get as much as $1,120,085, and instead, it's $1,082,608. So the difference there is like 40, is 38, about, about $38,000. So it's, it's not a big deal, and, and they, they rule the ro, they rule the roost on this thing. If Steve has gotten as much as he can out of them from negotiations, I think we've done pretty good.
And as he says, it's just housekeeping. It's a done deal.
Yeah. It's a pretty much a done deal. I think, I'm going to, I'm going to throw this number out, Steve, and you can try to help if, because I think a lot of people have, would have this as a question. What percent did the state put into this project, the total project? Because there are some things we knew that they would not include in this kind of an envelope project as reimbursable. And for us, the only difference makes is how much we paid out of how much the total thing, the total project cost. And my estimate is we've gotten about 30% on the dollar from the state, and we appreciate that. Is that about right, Steve?
Dick, without having the figures in front of me, I, I won't, I won't dispute what, what you're looking at. I would say that the project had some reimbursable categories of work. However, the specification and our scope of work had intended, and we designed into it, areas that are not reimbursable, and, and we did that eyes open. I will specifically point out the HVAC mechanical system work we did at both schools. That is not just, you know, by program rules, is not a reimbursable category of work. So all the money that went to purchasing of equipment, installing of the same, was not reimbursable, you know, in any, any event and, and any shape, way, or form. So there was always going to be, you know, wasn't going to be a two-part, like what's, you know, what town share and what state share, is also going to be a section of work that was always going to be 100% town share.
Right, right. And as I said, yeah, as you said, we went into it eyes open. Clearly, we knew we weren't, that there were some things that were not included. One of the things I think, to me, it seems important is there wasn't any comeback on the contingencies. We did not, we did not go beyond the contingencies. I assume that there was some contingencies that were not spent because the total cost of the project seems to be reasonable compared to what we originally expected, slightly, slightly less. At any rate, from that point of view, I think it was well managed, and I appreciate that. Do you agree with that?
Yes. We, the, the project carried two primary contingencies, one being a design contingency and the other being a construction contingency. And in both cases, we did not exhaust either one.
Congratulations.
Great. Thank you. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this.
My motion to approve the first amendment to the project funding agreement between the town of Topsfield and Massachusetts School Building Authority dated January 22nd, 2020.
Second. You have a second for Mr. Jackson. Is there any further discussion? I'm hearing none, so I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. I thank you all very much. On to item B. And I'm looking, this is what I'm looking for. This is the CARES Act funds acceptance, and Chief Collins Brown, I'd like to turn it over to you to explain what this is, at which point we'll make a motion and vote.
Yeah, sure. This is part of what the president signed for the CARES Act, for the stimulus package. Every ambulance company or provider of ambulance service received a percentage of their 2019 adjudicated Medicare claims, and so that $5,053.43 is our portion of that. And I have to thank the Middleton Fire Chief because his treasure collector alerted him, because it kind of just appeared in the bank accounts, and he, his treasure collector alerted him to the fact that he had it, and then he shared that with me. Otherwise, I'm, I'm not sure that we would, well, I know we would have realized it was there, but would have been kind of a mystery as to where it came from. So we're just looking to accept that money. We have to formally enter a portal within 30 days to accept it.
Nice going.
Yeah, always good.
But yes, there are a few things we have to do, so they'll be taken care of, I'm sure, Kevin.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to accept the stimulus funds from the CARES Act in the amount of $5,053.43.
Second.
And I hear a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous to pass the motion. On to the next, SAFE Grant. And this is a fire department's request for a letter of support. Chief Collins Brown, back to you.
Yes. First of all, I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate Neil on National Police Week. This is the National Police Week. So it seems like everything has a week, but this is appropriate, so congratulations. It's a great pleasure that we all work together. And this is kind of our annual ask for a letter of support for a SAFE Grant, so that's a staffing grant. And I know the Chief Haglund had done this before. So when you apply for a grant to help you with hiring staff, it asks for a letter of support from, basically to ensure that you've had communication. It's just part of the application process. So we've tried for the last three or four years to get federal funding to help us out with staffing, and so that's what we're doing again. Deadline is this Friday, so we've been kind of working on putting it together, but we really can't, we can't proceed at all with it without a letter of support. So I think, Kevin, you have a letter that you drafted from previous ones, or?
Correct. So we used last year's template. We made some adjustments to it to be more accurate, specifically with some of the adjustments to this, the operating budget for the fire department this coming year. And I'd also say that Chief Collins Brown and I have spent some time recently discussing this, the grant opportunity, how that might play into some of the additional funding sources we've received. Still some more conversation we had, but the grant being due Friday and the prior support that's been given by the Board. Chief is asking, in this case, and for the letter of support, and we'll work through some of the more fine details related to the, to the ask when we go forward on the grant.
So who will actually submit the grant? Who, what will the grant ask for? And what will be the, what will be the requirements from the grant? Typically, there's a quid pro quo on these.
It's, we'll, we'll ask for, it's for full, there's two parts of it. One's for recruitment and retention, and one is for hiring full-time firefighters. And there are very specific guidelines for this grant. It's a three-year grant. The first two years, the federal government pays 75% of salary and wages for a firefighter, and the third year, they pay 65%. So the first two years, we would be responsible for 25%, and then the third year, we'd be responsible for 35% of the salary and wages of a new firefighter. So the, the goal of it is to meet, to try to help us meet a minimum standard. We, right now, currently with two people on duty and myself, we don't meet any minimum standards of anything. So that's what we're trying to do for safety of our firefighters. So a minimum standard is four people. That would allow two people to be inside a building and two people to be outside to rescue and to start firefighting operations, and we don't meet that. So we take a risk. It's risky anyway, but we take more of a risk with the, the way we're set up, without having predictable guaranteed staffing. So my goal would be to get more towards a predictable staffing pattern, because then, if you had that, then you could look at cutting things and moving things around so that you would know how much overtime you would have. You would, all that stuff would be figured out, and you'd be less reliant on the kind of haphazard call system. So we're extremely grateful for the support and the money for the nighttime coverage that was put in the budget. We can't thank everyone enough for that support. The reality is, looking forward, we continue to be really busy. We continue to meet those safety standards, and we have an unpredictable staffing pattern that is getting less and less effective as people are not becoming called firefighters and can't keep up with the training and such like that. So trying to look forward, trying to take small steps forward to more predictable full-time staffing, never being without called firefighters. They're incredibly valuable and incredibly cost-effective, so we want to make sure that we continue to grow those people. But moving forward, there's gonna, I mean, there's a lot of people that aren't working right now, so they're available to be called firefighters, but as hopefully the economy approves and they go back to their jobs, we're going to end up in the same position we're starting to be in before, where there's less people available, so.
And Neil, what was your role on this? Did you ask for some police officers also?
No, it's not, it's nothing to do with the police. Chief Haglund, in the past, when he's applied for, I've been in the selectmen's meeting when he's applied for other grant opportunities for staffing, and he, I'm doing the same thing he did. He came and asked permission for a letter of support to apply for the grant, and that's what I'm doing, the same thing he did.
So Chief, Chief Collins Brown, is this a letter that Kevin would write, that it would be sent to you, or is it something that be from the Board of Selectmen, or what?
Um, I just. Chief, I can, I can answer that. So the letter that was previously submitted as part of the grant application was a letter from the town administrator indicating the support of the Board of Selectmen in that letter.
And then it gets uploaded into the application, that's all. I think that what's, I think what happened in years past is that there was a lack of communication, not relating to Topsfield at all, but, so people, fire departments applied for the grant without the support of their community, and then when they got the grant, there was no, it was a surprise and not planned for, so.
So Chief, is this for one position? How many positions is this?
No, that, so the, what would be, the way to, the way the, the grant is to get you towards safe staffing, so that's to get you to four people on duty at one time. So that's, that's a really weighty proposition. So like I said, we're baby steps still. We only have two people on guaranteed during the day. At night, we have a mixture of called firefighters and full-time firefighters making up shifts. So when Kevin and I spoke today, we talked about two versus four. Two does not get us to any minimum safety standard, but four might. So there, those are the two things. So it's, it's a really, it's a really thoughtful process that we have to go through, and we understand very much so, looking forward, what the worries are of state funding and debt and decreased revenues. We understand all that, but we do have to still look out for the safety of the town and the firefighters. So I think that question, I think, you know, we, we originally looked at looking at four, and I think that that's a solid number, because that does get us toward the grant. It gets us to the grant guidelines, which is minimum sta, minimum standards for safety. And, you know, there's, as all the federal grants, this is a similar pot of funding that we've got, like our radio grant from and things like that. And of all those grants, when it comes time, if you were, if you were awarded it, that you can make amendments to it as well. So all that stuff is kind of fluid at the end of it, that you can, if, if you're not able to meet, like our radio grant, we, the grant we've applied for with Middleton and Essex, we require, we ask for 90 radios, and in the middle of the grant process, the federal government cut the amount of money they gave you for a radio. So they tell you, you have to buy what you say you're going to buy, but we couldn't do that because they didn't give us enough money. So we had to amend our grant to less radios. So that's all kind of part of the process.
So if we got a grant, we're not committed to hiring four new individuals?
Right, right. We're, we're just applying for, we're not committed to anything.
I, I am of the opinion that our fire department has been underfunded and undermanned for, I don't know how many years, and I personally am embarrassed about that. And I will always be in favor of trying to get it up to the fact that we've got minimum standards to, so that we can at least address this problem with a straight face.
So does this move us from the model of the called firefighters being in the station now paid? So we started off with, give them a stipend if they agreed to be on call at home, and then now this time, we're moving them into the fire station with overtime monies or with called firefighter monies, and now this next step is moving to full-time firefighters additional to the staff?
Yeah, because we would never be, we'll never be able to, I, I know that people worry about the called firefighters, and they're really a valuable asset and a really affordable asset. So we're never going to be without that. In fact, that's the, the. In fact, that's the wisest thing to do, would be to build them into the system, and they would be part of that minimum staffing. And so they'd be a less expensive part of that minimum staffing. And then also, it would offer the opportunity, right now, it gives you, it would give you the opportunity of better distribution of staffing with skill sets, because right now, we have a lot of new people that don't have a lot of experience. And so it would give us the ability, called people could work with full-time people all the time in their shift. So there's, there's a lot of reasons why that's, it's a good, it's a good model, because they would feel safer, they would be better trained, and they would be able to handle things more confidently if they had, you know, more supervision during their shift with, with people with experience. So in the end, it works out, it would work out for everyone. But we would never be without the called firefighters. We can't be without them. There's too much to do.
Would somebody like to make a motion as outlined in the detailed agenda?
I'd vote to approve the request by Fire Chief Collins Brown and the Topsfield Fire Department for a letter of support to include when applying for the Safer Grant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A first and a second. Is there further discussion?
Just to clarify, so if this grant is approved, we'd have to approve the hiring of additional people and the authorization of funding for those individuals? That would be another step that would be forthcoming after receiving the grant, Chief?
For sure, yep.
Actually, if we are awarded the grant, it will be up to the Board of Selectmen to accept the grant. That's one of the things that we always do at town meetings, have. So there is a step in there where the Board of Selectmen would accept it, or under certain terms that we might try to modify it. But it does require the Board of Selectmen to accept that.
That answers your question.
I'd just mention, Chief Collins Brown and I are working through some of the final, financial components of it as well. So through the application process, you know, as Mr. Clifford said earlier, eyes wide open. We'll make sure we understand sort of what those costs look like relative to any potential savings.
I suspect the wise, eyes wide open will inevitably include the Finance Committee. Now, again, this is placing this application for a grant. It's a request for the grant. The approval requires the Board of Selectmen. And I, again, I'll say, I believe the FinCom would be very much involved with this, and indeed, maybe the citizens of the town that have interest or concerns about our costs and structural costs, as you sometimes point out very wisely, Kevin. We do need to be careful of our structural costs.
Yeah, my concern now is more just kind of the situation that we're in, very, you know, we can't really predict exactly how much money is coming in, covering existing costs. So it's nothing in particular against the Chief applying for this, or what the need might be, just kind of the tenuous, you know, situation that we're in right now. So since she had said, "We're not committed to this", I have no problem moving forward, because we'll have a better idea of the conditions we're in a little bit down the road, maybe by the time the grant comes back.
We should not also be too disingenuous. Again, this suggests that we're asking for four full-time firefighters to be staffed at the firehouse. That would seem to me to be a bit over the top for a 6,000-person town. It's possible that somebody would want to do that, but I'm not sure that we actually would want to do that.
Well, we're so far under, like a Manchester, if you compare us to like communities, we're so far under their staff. So there's a whole, there's a whole algorithm to decide how many staff you should have. And we have less than, we have less than half the staff we should have for a community of this size. That's, that's well-known, so.
I'd like not to get into a discussion, which we may very well have at some point in our future, about specific staffing. What I understand this is, it's an opportunity, if all things aligned, to potentially get some federal assistance in increasing, increasing fire department staffing levels, but that it does not come at this stage with any obligations per se.
Right.
Okay. Any further questions?
I agree with that, John and Jen. It doesn't come with any preconceived ideas about what we have to spend. But, but this kind of a grant, and I've seen it before, it will pay a certain percentage of the first year or two, and then another percentage, lower percentage for the next year or two. But then all of a sudden, they cut the string, and you're on your own. So that's where the commitment comes to keep this thing going. And now the town has to come up with the full load of that increase. But however, I'm prepared to move forward with that as well, because as I said earlier, we've been underfunded and understaffed for a number of years, and it's embarrassing.
Yep. Now, I'd just like to point out, this is not about hiring or changing strategy.
None at all.
It's about making an application that could open a door. That's it.
Yep.
That's right.
Any further discussion? Let us move to a roll call vote. On the motion, Mr. Jackson?
I vote aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer? Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We will now move to item four, which is Police Department New 2020 K-8A Ford Interceptor Utility. And before we have a motion made, I would like Chief Hovey, first of all, welcome to what will become a regular Monday night for you. And would like to ask you to sort of give us some background on this and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there was a fiscal year 2020 for a, in back at the town meeting in 2019, there was a warrant article for $62,000 for the purchase of a new police cruiser, totally outfitted with equipment and modifications by a specific vendor to make it a police package. At this time, we took possession of the vehicle on April 17th, just a few weeks ago. And we have some outstanding invoices that we need to resolve. My understanding is through that warrant article that the Board of Selectmen need to vote specifically on the, on those outstanding invoices that we have. And the number one is the purchase of the vehicle, which is from MHQ Company off the state bid list for $34,070.98. So that far exceeds the $25,000. That is, my understanding, has the appropriation for approval with the town administrator. In addition, we have the outfitting and the conversion of the vehicle for Adamson's Industries for $19,117.45. We have additional invoices for Transcorp or Hayward Associates for $1,141.19. And then another one from Hayward Associates for $656.8. And then, so, and then for a flexible barricade for, from Central Supply, Central Industries, for $339. So those invoices that are on a bill schedule would total $55,324.70. We had previously spent and has already been paid for miscellaneous equipment to, such as patrol rifles, Leslie's shotgun, and miscellaneous equipment, But those invoices have been paid. So I'm looking for the approval and support and the vote from the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Chairman, for the expenditures of $55,324.70, so we can pay these vendors.
Kevin, do you have any comments?
So the process is, as the Chief mentioned, there's a number of different vendors in there. In aggregate, the bottom line number of the $55,000 checks on my end as well. But the big one was the $34,000 for the purchase of the vehicle itself. That's, that's the one that's over the $25,000 threshold.
Yep. Any?
Yeah, so just going with Chief, for the dollar side, we're looking at this point, as you said, $55,000 roughly. But then there was also some $6,700 that has already been applied to this particular police cruiser?
That is correct.
So let me just, thank you. So order of magnitude, it's $62,000 for providing the vehicle and outfitting it, which is in line with what was in the warrant article.
That is correct.
So this is a past history now, because it's not on a warrant, but we did have a change in dollar amount for a future intended one, which was 56K. What was the, what would have been the difference? It's, I'm just trying to figure out.
The difference of the one that was projected to go forward for fiscal year 21 is that we, when we purchased the 2020, which is a brand-new Ford vehicle, we didn't have all the specifications of what equipment we could transfer from an older vehicle. We also made a decision not to trade in a vehicle for the 2020 vehicle for the fiscal year 20. So therefore, without transferring equipment, it raised the price. If we were going forward for a 21, there would have been a specific equipment that we would have taken out of the vehicle we were gonna trade in, which was going to lower the total cost of the vehicle from 63 down to 57.
Thank you.
Would somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the purchase of a 2020 K-8A Ford Interceptor for the Topsfield Police Department, in which funds were appropriated at the 2019 ATM for an amount of $34,070.98.
Second.
Now, I have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion on the board? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. On to, and Chief, thank you very much for your efforts in helping explaining that, and enjoy your rides.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm moving on to item five, Tri-Town Council Request to Hang a Banner for Class of 2020. And I'm asking, who is here representing the Tri-Town Council for this?
Oh, yes. Good evening, Select Board. Meredith Shaw, the Executive Director of Tri-Town Council, and I know I'm joined by my colleague.
Yeah, we do introduce ourselves.
Gretchen Rehack from Tri-Town Council, as well as Topsfield resident.
Great. So would you explain to us what this is? And then, Kevin, I'm gonna pass it to you for comments and check-ins and the due diligence I know you've done. Go ahead, Meredith.
Yeah, thank you. Happy to. So as many of you know, for the past 51 years, we have hosted an all-night grad party on the night of graduation for our graduating seniors. And given the coronavirus outbreak, those plans have been derailed, as have many plans in our community and in our lives. So we want to figure out a way to honor the class of 2020. So working with a group of parent volunteers, we've been brainstorming lots of different ideas. And one of the ideas that we came up with was to hang a banner in the center of each of the three towns, congratulating the seniors, acknowledging the seniors on their accomplishments. And it's our hope that we could hang it around the time that the graduation was originally scheduled and leave it up for a few weeks. And it's just, again, sending the message to the young people that we support them, their community supports them, and we recognize their tremendous accomplishments upon the graduation.
Kevin, do you have any comments?
Well, I just want to thank the efforts being made by the Tri-Town Council. They've been an amazing partner since I've been here on a number of fronts. And the little details like this make a big difference, and we look forward to working with them. There's a couple of different options on the table, and my understanding is that there was a location at Town Hall, historically near Proctor School, between two trees where banners historically were hung, and those trees have been, were removed, or a tree was removed, which takes a little bit challenging. So we're trying to capture the essence of trying to celebrate the students and their graduation. And there's a couple of different ideas that we've floated out there for a specific location, and we're just getting to the finish line with deciding exactly where the most appropriate location would be, is my understanding at this point. That was my update a couple of days ago. I don't know if there's been any movement, Gretchen.
Right. Thank you so much, Kevin. Yes, I walked the Common with Steve Shepherd, Superintendent of Parks and Cemetery, the other day. And again, what, as Meredith was saying, is this is a banner that is for all three towns. And it's very intentional that Tri-Town Council, as we represent Topsfield, Boxford, and Middleton, that this is not just exclusively for Topsfield graduates. We're proud of all of the graduates. And given the limitations right now at Masco, at least through May 18th, there is, there can be absolutely no banners, signs, et cetera. So this is an effort to, on the behalf of Tri-Town Council, sponsored these signs to, we purchased them for each of the three towns. And we have what I think to be a pretty good location, and we look to you for blessing of this, is that it would be between two trees that are right on the Common, just in front of the gazebo, running on 97. So they would be at eye level to pedestrians and to people in cars. The banner itself, I think that Meredith had already submitted the specifications to you. It's four by eight. It's, it's a really nice, wonderfully inclusive shot that was taken by Joe Yutkins, who is the Chair of the Photography Department at Masco. And it represents all the children, or all the youth of the class of 2020. So you can see their faces, and he gave us that, that particular very high-resolution shot. So we had banners made. And our hope is that we would be able to hang this banner between, I'm not sure if it's, I think it might be two maple trees. But Steve and I kind of looked at the logistics of it. It would be a very nice photo backdrop. And then plans are coming together for later on May 29th for what would be the grad, what would be the graduation date for Masco, to have the opportunity for families to come and take pictures at the gazebo, socially distanced with planters that have been, we've gotten permission from the Topsfield Main Street Foundation to use the planters. So there's a lot of things in play. We just want to make the Common look festive, inviting, celebrate the students. There's additional plans being made. But at this point, we're just asking for permission to hang the sign for anywhere from two to four weeks. And again, we defer to you, but we're looking at between May 22nd to June 5th, would be two weeks. The students are gonna be getting their caps and gowns on May 29th, again, what was to be their graduation day. They're doing that in the morning through Maskinomah, and we're not in any way trying to take away from Masco's celebration. But if students then have got their caps and gowns on the 29th, it would be lovely if then they could go to the Common with their families and take pictures. So I guess in summary, we're just asking for your permission to hang a banner anywhere from two to four weeks. And I know Lynn had, you had mentioned, Lynn and I are part of a parent celebration committee as both seniors, to, if it could be extended for four weeks. So that, that sort of sums it up.
Gretchen, I have a question. Seems to me that there's most excitement before something happens, not after. And it seems to me, if you're gonna pick, I'm not sure four weeks is necessary, but if you're gonna pick three weeks, why not pick two weeks before and one week after? There's sort of the buildup and excitement and so on, and then, and people could go down. Are you saying that that would mean that there'd only be a week that they'd be able to actually pose with their caps and gowns in front of it? Is that the issue?
No, I think ideally it would be up for a month, but we didn't want to put it up too soon. The seniors are not getting their caps and gowns until Friday, May 29th, in the morning. So the hope would be that if this, if the sign could go up, the banner could go up around the 22nd. up around the twenty-second. And we've also been working with Terry Dwanell of Holiday Tree Farm, who used to do all of the Topsfield Main Street planters. So, she's specifically growing in her greenhouse right now, plants that are going to complement the red and white colors, and, and working with Kim Filpot, who is also a member of the Topsfield Main Street Foundation. The hope is that all of a sudden, on the twenty-second, you drive by and there will be kind of this, the gazebo will be somewhat transformed and be this beautiful photo backdrop. It'll get the excitement going for that week prior, and then on the twenty-ninth, all the students, when they have their caps and gowns, would, would have the opportunity to do it. If, if the banner could remain up until the fifth, that would be great. And then there's talk that we would, the, the plan right now for Masco is the, on August first, Principal Delany has, has discussed having a true graduation ceremony on the football field. That kind of remains to be seen, but our hope, from Tri-Town Council's perspective, is that at least we would be able to, in, in each of the towns, have an area where students could come in and have their photos. Both Boxford and Middleton have approved banners being hung, and so we are hoping that Topsfield will follow suit.
Have they limited or suggested, or did you offer a specific time? You've mentioned two weeks, three weeks, and four weeks. And what have they approved? Has it had any time limits?
Um, Lynn, I defer to you as well in, in, in the, we have a pretty involved group of about thirty parents from the, from all three towns that are the part of the Parent Celebration Committee. So, I, I kind of stagger on both. I sit on both Tri-Town Council and as a parent of a graduate. But the hope was the, the twenty-second is kind of the, the, the possible dates that all three towns would then be unveiling something. It was suggested to have a banner out too early would really kind of take away from the actual ceremony. We're cognizant of the fact that on Friday, May twenty-ninth, two-hundred-and-eighty-five Twenty-Twenty graduates expected that to be their graduation date for Masco. So, we want to have something that's special, that is on the date, and then will extend. By having it extended and having the planters, we hope that there, then wouldn't be any problem with social distancing and whatnot. So, families could come down, once their student has their cap and gown, they could then go down and, and take pictures.
Gretchen, my question is different. You said that Middleton and Boxford had approved this, and I was wondering if everybody puts it up on the twenty-second, is, are those approvals, do they include limits on how long? They owe three weeks here in this town, four weeks? What is the approval so far?
Meredith, I'm sure can answer that. She's had experience with, with the other town administrators.
Yeah, so I know in Boxford, we have to have it down by June eighth. And in Middleton, we actually didn't set a specific date, because we weren't sure at the time I was conversing with the, the Board of Selectmen when we were going to be putting it up. But we had up, up to a month, I believe, is what we were discussing. So, again, in Middleton, it'll go up on the twenty-second, and then we'd probably take them down all around the same time as well.
I think eight would be very acceptable in that regard. I'm not sure a month makes as much sense, but I love the idea behind it, and I'm kind of quibbling just a little bit on how long, but I don't see a problem.
Okay, thank you.
John, typically, we put up banners for two weeks and not more than that. With that being the case, this is, I think, much different. Those are typically announcing some nonprofit, doing something or other. This is unusual because of the circumstances of the COVID knocking off the graduation, and it is certainly an absolute community. It's part of the town itself, so to speak, of the Tri-Towns. So, extending beyond the two weeks, I don't see as a problem. In my mind, it isn't. It's, it's an exception, but it's an unusual exception because of the circumstances and the nature of it. The concern I might have, though, we talked about the height of this thing. If it's not going to be well above the ground, then we need to be careful that the, whatever the, is securing it does not create a safety hazard for somebody, especially at night, if they happen to be walking on the Common. Don't walk into some rope or something of that nature. Could you say once again your thoughts about how high it was going to be?
Sure, I, I'd be happy to. And again, it was a very, fairly thorough walkthrough with, with Steve Shepherd. And as you may know, Steve, as the Superintendent, approves all of the uses on the Common. And again, I feel, I, full disclosure, and I, and I'm happy to see that, that Marshall Hook is in attendance as well. Park and Cemetery Commissioners actually approve anything that is on the Common. So, again, we're coming to the Selectmen, again, not necessarily for approval, but hopefully for your acceptance. Steve and the Park and Cemetery Commissioners voted in, in complete agreement to have the sign, the banner hung. The banner would be between two trees, and again, I want to say they're maple trees. They are probably about eight feet from ninety-seven. They are, there is nothing at all that would affect the, the, the intersection, because I know that is, can be a dangerous intersection. The banner itself is only eight feet by four, and it has grommets on either side, so that it would probably be just set up so that it would be eye level. The distance between the trees is probably about twelve feet, so there would be very little rope on either side. So, as far as a safety factor, I don't, I don't see that at all. We also walked through the grounds when we did this with a photographer who was looking at this, for what would be the optimal way to take some really nice shots for graduates. And you've got the beautiful Common in the background, you've got the Emerson Center. Steve Shepherd assures us that there's going to be a, a memorial day. So, this seemed to be, we looked at a couple of different options. Safety-wise, not at all a factor. Visually, I think, very attractive, and will be a good, will really set, set the tone. And just for point of reference, in Middleton, it's going to be right in front of the Flint Library. And, and Meredith, I, I'm not positive about Boxford, but in the downtown?
Yeah, I'm working with their Department of Public Works person to figure out the best, the best place for it. It's either going to be in the East Boxford Center or in the West Boxford Center. Yeah.
Good.
I, I see, I see no particular problem with this. I'm willing to make a motion unless there's a lot of other.
No, would you please, Dick? That's great. Thank you.
I motion to request for the Tri-Town Council to place a four-foot by eight-foot banner honoring the Maskinomah High School graduation class of Twenty-Twenty on town property in the, in the, on the Common for a period starting May twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and to be removed on or before June nineteenth, twenty-twenty, and that it be put up in, in a way that is safe.
I'll second.
Second, we have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
I vote aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. I thank you all on that. And Gretchen and Meredith, good luck. I think it's a wonderful thing. I look forward to seeing it up there.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's great. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We are now going to move on. Dan never thought we'd get here, but we are going to move on to item number six. The public hearing, this is really not so much a public hearing as the board discussion following the public hearing that was concluded on May fourth. So, we know that the applicant for this sign is present with us today, hiding under the Lauren Richards window there, and maybe Dan will come back in a moment here.
Hi, I'm sorry, this is Lauren Richards. I'm his wife.
Oh, you are here. Okay, good. Welcome.
He'll be right there.
That's great. Thanks. So, what I would like to do is, because we discuss this a lot, is to perhaps entertain the motion second, and then we will discuss some review.
A motion to approve the request from Daniel Donegan of Topsfield Motive Company, who is seeking a special permit under Article Eight, Section thirteen-point-three of the Sign Regulation zoning bylaw to install new signage at sixteen Maple Street, Topsfield, Mass.
Go ahead, your second.
Take it.
We have a first and a second, and now for discussion. So, what I would like to do, Dan, is invite you, very briefly, you have filed a permit, am I correct, a new permit?
Yeah, correct.
And it has been rejected?
It has.
And I'm looking to see which one of these documents and so on it is here. So, the question now is, are we happy with what you have proposed in its place? I'm looking for the application, so that'd be the sign updated.
While you're doing that, in, in summary, Dan, my understanding is that you've essentially trimmed the sides of it, and that's based on the picture that you've provided, such that the total area has been changed from three-hundred-and-sixty square feet to two-hundred-and-eighty-two square feet.
Correct. It was, yeah, roughly like a twenty-two percent reduction in size.
Yeah. Again, essentially, what happened is you, you pull in the sides so that instead of being sixty feet long, it's forty-seven feet long. About right?
That's correct.
And the height stays the same as it had been before. So, the ratio's a little bit different, but, but that's, that's, that's the changes you, that's the modified one that you were applying for.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And thank you, Dick, for the summary on that. And having submitted it, having had it denied, as we knew would be the case, we are now, once again, in position to vote on a, an exemption. And so, the question is, we have a motion before us. Is there any discussion, further discussion from the previous week's conversation about this? Any questions?
I would like to, so this is just being deliberation. I don't have any questions.
It is.
Rather deliberating. I expressed myself last week, not knowing exactly what the size of the sign was going to be. We didn't make any decisions on that. Understanding what it is now, I understand the change that's being proposed. I still believe that the sign is inappropriate. It is too large. It is on a residential street, and it does not, in my mind, is not in keeping with the bylaw as it's written. But I've expressed myself on these and with more detail in the past, and I'll leave it at that.
I just ask a question. Had there been any complaints, concerns of any residents in that area, Daniel?
No, no, not at all. I mean, the opposite, just like local people from Topsfield, like people that maybe would stop at the co-op or something like that, and then coming over and starting a conversation, being like, we had no idea you were here. So, no complaints.
And Kevin, nothing coming into the town?
None, nothing that I'm aware of. Not any complaints on our office.
And how long has this sign been up now, Daniel?
I believe since the, since the late fall that we put it up.
Yeah, I think it's right.
I believe, I believe so. I mean, I just want to reiterate, sorry to, but I do want to reiterate that putting it up, the town, like the, the aesthetic of the town and the, you know, how it was going to be presented was really on the front, you know, of my concerns. This wasn't, I, I took that into a lot of, you know, consideration when, you know, designing it and, and, and paying for it.
Mr. Jackson?
I would, I would comment about the fact that I personally think it's not a bad-looking sign. I, I, I don't, I don't find it objectionable. It certainly doesn't meet the town's signed bylaw, but the fact of the matter is, the way the bylaw is written, covering the businesses on Route One, I don't think it's appropriate anyway. However, I would go on to say that I don't think the sign looked bad. Dan has, in good faith, tried to reduce the size of the sign to, to appease us more. And I just, I, I'm of the opinion that there needs to be a signed bylaw that pertains to Route One versus a signed bylaw that pertains to downtown and on residential streets. So, I don't have a problem with this. I will vote in favor of it. Dan has tried to do it, tried to, tried to make some changes to it without spending a lot of money, and I can understand that. I would probably slap his hands for not being aware of the fact that the town has a signed bylaw, but that neither here nor there, but the next time, he'll, he'll, he'll know better.
Well.
I vote, I voted in favor of it.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate the challenge, Dan. I think that, given the Route One location, where it does not look right out into the back window of residences and so on, given the distance from the road, and given the lack of complaints, if we had a file of complaints and so on, then I think we'd be looking to try and incorporate those concerns very much in this. But as I've gone by a number of times, while it's outside the expectation of what a, an attractive and appropriate sign would look like, I think that it actually adds a little something to the area, and so I too am in favor of it as an example of where the exception supports the rule.
We just add that I, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I, I would add that I think it's something that we need to address, because by granting Daniel an exemption, it's over five times the size it should be. It, it opens us up to other people putting up an enormous sign and then are saying, we just don't like that. We liked Daniel's, but we didn't like yours. And that is a slippery slope. So, I think this needs to be addressed as far as the bylaw is concerned.
Any further discussion?
I motion to amend the, the motion that's on the floor to add, at the end of that motion, the sign whose size is six feet by forty-seven feet and is unlighted.
But that's on the permit. I don't think we need to do that. We don't do that typically with signed things. That's on the permit itself.
We do try to be clear in our motions, and since the size is nowhere that I found it on the application, the total area is, but not the size as I see it. And secondly, we would typically vote about the lighting of it, but since there was nothing said about it, we need to make it clear that this is an unlighted sign.
Is that the size, Daniel? Six by forty-seven? Is that what that is exactly?
That's correct, Lynn, yes.
I mean, my attitude is to support it as is and note that any change to a sign requires that you come back, you'd have to come back to us, because any change of a non-conforming sign is not grand, is not grandfathered. If the, the, the non-conforming sign is there, if you make a change to it, then it automatically goes back and is a new first permit process.
The motion would make it clear, the amendment would make it clear as to what was approved. But there, there's a motion on the floor. I think you want to call for.
You just want the unlighted. Dick, you want unlighted added and what?
Who, whose size is six feet by forty-seven feet and is unlighted.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm not going to predict.
I, I had said.
Sorry, not the amendment.
I had said earlier, Dan, that I like the way the sign looks, but I will tell you, if it ever became lighted, I would have a problem with it in terms of its location and in terms of what it looks like if it were lighted.
So, we have an amendment on the floor. I'd like to ask for a second on the amendment.
I just gave it.
Okay, we have a first and a second. We're going to vote now by roll call on the amendment, which is to add Mr. Gant's language to the motion as it was originally put forth. So, on the amendment to add Mr. Gant's language, Mr. Jackson?
Let me, let me clarify that amendment. You want the sign on the amendment, forty, the size, forty-seven by?
Mr. Gant's amendments were to say that it was six by forty-seven and unlighted.
I vote aye.
You vote aye. Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
So, passes unanimously. So it passes unanimously, so we have amended the motion on the floor. That said, is there further discussion about the motion on the floor, the main motion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudas?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Gant?
Nay.
Even though you changed the amendment, okay. Miss, Mr. Spencer, aye. So it's three in favor, three aye, one nay. Okay, well, I thank you.
Congratulations, Daniel.
Good luck, Dan. Nice, nice job.
Sure, everyone. Thank you very much.
Take care.
You tried, you tried to help us, and I appreciate that.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so now we go to item seven, the 2020 ATM and STM warrants. I would like to start with, let's have a discussion first, I think. And Kevin, I would like to ask if you would please just bring us up to speed and lead us.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. So following our meeting last week, the version was sent to KP Law for review. KP Law came back with some, some, some small tweaks to some of the language and some, a couple of comments within it. I did speak on Friday with Lauren Goldberg from KP Law. And on the home rule petition article specifically, there was a couple more clarifying items that she want, she suggested we consider putting in, which we'll get to as we go through this. That was provided this afternoon, the final edits, and was emailed to the board. Not as early as I would have liked otherwise, but it was sent to you folks and put on board docs. And so I, I would, if appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I can walk you through what these additional changes that appear in front of you now.
Yep. My sense is that we've gone through this with a very fine-tooth comb and that what would be appropriate is just touching down on any of the changes that were made, even if they're small, so that there's no question that we've once again put our eyes across everything.
Absolutely.
I would also ask that you be clear on board docs, which document you will be working from, so we can all open the proper one.
Sure. So this is the ATM. It's saved as Tops underscore V 5.1 Draft 2020 ATM underscore warrant dated 5/7/20 with the letters KP at the end.
Excellent. Thank you.
Wouldn't it help if we had the screen, the document up on the screen, so we could all look at it as we went through?
Let me see. Just once again, I don't know if this happened, but. I don't know why this is having such a. Want some to share? Trying to open up, we're going to give one shot on this. Okay, so I'm here, share. Hit this. Open system, security, privacy. Okay, I'm in security and privacy and. Opening, make changes. Okay, so.
Do you want me to try it, John?
I'm sure, Dick, go ahead. I'm, I don't know why. I'm going to try this one more time.
There it is.
Okay, Dick, I'm very happy with what you got there. If you've been able to put that up, thank you.
And just.
Assume that's you, isn't it?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Actually, I think I'm, I think I'm going to do it differently. I'm sorry. Let me, okay. I have to get myself straight here just a second because I had that out of the way. And let me bring back. Oh, I'm sorry. I.
I think you've got vision, vision 4.2 up there, Dick.
I got 4.2 up there.
Well, that's one we went through last week, isn't it?
No, it should be 5.1 now.
Dick, if you would, this is the wrong date on the bottom anyway. If you would unview your screen, unshare your screen, I think I've got it.
Okay, good. Sorry about that.
No, gave it a shot. We gave it a shot. I like that. So now what I'm going to try to do is go to Zoom, Zoom and share. And it says yes, and open system, what? Seems so unhappy. Screen files.
Do you have it?
Yeah, I thought I did. Oh, it wants me to, I, you know what it is, it's changing my permissions, but I've got to log out of Zoom and then back in, so. I'm gonna leave for a second.
Well, why don't I? Instead of keep going, let's see if I can get this one up. This is unbelievable that we. I'm not getting this.
We'll eventually get to the point where we know how to run Zoom.
Okay, I am back.
Do you have it?
See what happens with this now. I don't know what's going on. I had everything, I can't, I'm not doing it, so I'm.
Try it again. I have to get the right thing here. Looks like this one. Does that, does that look good to people?
That's the 5.7 version.
Yeah, that looks good.
That's the five, yeah, that's the 5.1 version.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay. So with that, okay. So we'll go down and review this with review and go next. The, there's some kind of spacing thing here by school.
So that, that, if you, if you want, so what I did on the, on the Masconomit Regional High School, and the address is I took out the word auditorium in, because we've also booked the fieldhouse. And the event for the town meeting, if we need to do additional social distancing, it gives us more options.
Great.
And talked with, with Lauren, she just suggested taking out the specifics with auditorium. So that's.
There's something at the end of Masco Regional School. I'm just, I'm going to accept that there's space or something there.
Yeah, I think that's a little thing, Dick. Yep.
Whoa. Why, why?
Well, we accepted.
I'm just going to.
Well, High School, auditorium's going to come out or is it going to stay?
The reason that moved, Mr. Gant, was because the, I changed the number of lines in that as a result of taking out auditorium.
So you just want to take this out right here, right?
Yeah, if you accept those, it should get you there in a couple of clicks, I believe.
Okay. Okay. And then there was a comment. Now, what are we going to do about these, the end notes? We're going to delete those?
I deleted them as they caused some issues at the tail end of the document that.
Okay, this one still has it, so I'm going to reject. That may also be.
Can I make a comment?
If you, if you accept it, I think it'll accept the deletion that I had.
Is it possible, guys, to just go through conceptually what the changes are and then Kevin can make these changes afterward just to speed things?
That's fine.
Kevin, I have one thing before we go on, which is not flagged here. It's not the Masconomit Regional Schools, it's the Masconomit Regional School District. That is our legal name.
I'm going to add that word in here then?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to take it out. It's out of track changes. D I S T R I C T.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Masconomit Regional School District.
That's it.
Perfect, okay.
Okay, next one. That's okay. We're going to accept, no, we don't want to accept that. Next, next, because we took out the, okay, and so I'm.
Right, so we took out the end note. Lauren had suggested putting it in there. She said it was not something that was required. As I said, it really messed up the formatting significantly. It just referenced that this was a year of COVID-19 at the end. Doesn't affect it.
I'm going to, I'm going to accept whatever this is right here. You see after Article Third, I'm going to say accept. And I'm not sure what it did.
It took a period out.
Was it the right thing to do?
Yep, it took a period out.
Okay.
And for the record too, folks, I just want to mention too, the page numbers show 18 of 18. Again, I don't know why it's doing that. My page numbers are one of 16, two of 16, et cetera, on the one I'm looking at, which is the version on my heart, on my desktop. But for some reason, the conversion on Word does that, just for what it's worth.
So anyway, yep, that, so that needs to be, the page numbering needs to be fixed. Okay, so now we're down to Article Third, and we have some dollar amounts in here.
So these are the budget numbers that were, that the FinCon will be voting on tomorrow and which represent the changes that were made between the school, the town, and Masconomit over the last few weeks. And in addition, I, I had added a warrant article, Article 32 in the last version for the overlay surplus, talking with, with Lauren and then confirming with Catherine Gabriel. We felt our account, it felt was more appropriate and consistent to have it as part of Article Three, that $100,000 of the overlay surplus was there. So that change is also in here, the recommendation of, of the attorneys.
Absolutely agree with that. That, that, that new article that you put in the last at the bottom there did not make sense. If it's going to be done, this is the place to do it.
That's right.
That's the case, however, the numbers here then are not correct. If anything, this, you can see that it doesn't go down by 150,000 roughly, this plus the 50, whatever it is above. So the second number is, the raisin assess is the wrong amount.
Now, I think that's the right amount. If you add the 60,074 from Article Second to 21,9, to 21,882, you come up with the total, I think 21,942?
The 29, 942 is not the problem. The problem is down here, 21,88. See, if you have, you have 21,942 here, and you're going to take two things out of it. You're going to take out from Article Second some $60,000 and then another $100,000. So this only has the $60,000 out of it. You need to take out the additional $100,000, so this should, anything should drop to 782. All right, so I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave this for Kevin to work out. It's very, well, we can do it right now, but go ahead.
I, I.
I was going to say, is the amount that we truly need 22,042, when you add in that $100,000?
Let me grab my calculator.
This, this is Catherine. Could I speak for a moment?
Sure.
Please.
And so this $100,000 from overlay is basically treated the same way in Article Two, reduce the tax rate? So you're not subtracting the $100,000 as you do the $60,000 from Article Second above? So I would say that those numbers are correct.
Yep, so it means we needed more money. We need to add the $100,000 to the 21,942 to get to our true number that we need. So I think those numbers are right the way they are.
Okay, I'm not sure I agree with that, but if everybody's happy, I'll go with it. So do you want me to accept these then? All right?
Yes.
I'd like Kevin and Catherine to work on it and get those numbers straight.
Accept.
Kevin, do you think, and Catherine, do you think those numbers are straight?
I believe, yes, I do.
We did look at it and we believe it is, but we'll double, we'll, we'll triple check them. We'll make sure.
I'm going to delete this part right here, okay?
In the model, this, the $100,000 is actually being applied to the allowable for abatement exemption. So it's, it's not treated as part of the budget. It's not an appropriation. It's correct the way it is on, on Article Third.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
That's it. No color on the bottom of your.
Okay, I'm going to accept the, the second 21 million down there as the next thing. Okay, and now we're down to Article 15. Clarifying language from KP, correct?
KP added that language incorrect.
All right, I'm going to accept that. And the next one is to add a comma in after study. I'll accept that. Is that okay?
Looks good.
Yep.
And so the next one here is taking out the word including. It just reads better. Again, input from KP. I agree with that. Looks good to me. Okay? Okay. And then correction on the spelling here, I guess. There's an extra S in there.
Where are you? Where are you, Dick?
I'm, I'm at the bottom, right down here.
Article 20?
Yep.
First.
Incorrectly.
I put in that S there. I'm not sure what that delete is. I'll, I'll accept it, but.
No, that's not the right spelling of commissioners, and I'm warning, I'm spacing out.
It's not correct now? Commission? Yeah, what's wrong with it?
Commissioner is two, Commission of Education is two M's, two I's. I mean, two, two M's, two S's.
Two S's, yes.
It's got that.
S M I S S I O N E, that's correct.
It's an update, the update has the corrected S in that.
So it probably took a period out at the end of that. That's all, Dick.
Okay, let me go back and see what it looks like. Where, where was that?
It was down Article, you go down.
Was below here?
It's 21st, wasn't it?
Yep, we were down a whole page.
Oh, yes, I see. Okay, it looks, okay, it looks good. Okay.
So pass the 21st.
Okay.
Next from here.
Okay, now this is mockups on this.
So I could explain this. So basically, one of the conversations that we've all been a part of is the potential and the flexibility with the adjustments to, to have a rec department and reorganize how the different departments are currently structured. Talking through that with Lawrence, she suggested that this language in Section One be added to allow for that type of flexibility. We did make a note to include the Board of Selectment in that process so that whatever structures, restructuring we determine is appropriate, and I say we because I'm working closely with Gary Wilds, Greg Crum, and Steve Shepherd on this. We want to make sure that there's a collaborative effort in that setup. So this was her language to try to get us to that point and allow for that flexibility. So that's what this represents. It is slightly different than what we've had, obviously. This is the biggest and really the only change change, I'd say, even though it's not, or addition, I should say, it's the only addition that I would say that has a little more to it than just the, the language or, or the grammar.
Is this okay with Steve and Gary and Greg?
So I got this late this afternoon. I haven't shared this with them this evening, but I know that this has been for about three days in the last week. This is exactly what we've been talking about, the ability to have flexibility.
Want to be sure we're in on.
I have talked to Gary and Greg both about that issue, and they're okay with it.
So I can accept it?
Yep. Yep.
The only thing, just for consistency, we have Board of Selectment in there again with small letters. I think in the other sections, we put caps.
Just the left of your cursor, down, next, that's it.
Yeah, right there.
Oh, that, yeah. I copied that in from KP's email. That's why it's in blue.
No worries. And I just put it in black.
I am going to, yes, I'm going to fix that. Oh, this is because this is, ah. What is all this stuff? Oh, it's all normal? Okay. Okay, so the next one here is. Okay, so the next one here is highway, and there's, I think that's a comment that we have.
That was a prior comment, so this was what came back to me on Friday, and I'm talking through it with Lauren. The revised language she sent back is in Section One and in Section Two C.
So she's left it, so the, her comment is, it is anticip, is it anticipated that the department head will need the approval of the town administrator to make policy decisions? Same question for the other department issues, and that, then each of the next items has the same question.
Correct, and just talking through that with her, and what the language as it represents right now, we've, we've got a good understanding that the, with the commissioner's responsibilities being transferred over to the town administrator, that further clarification beyond the setting of the rate by the board was not, not necessary, I guess, no further language.
Okay, so I'm gonna take that comment, and I'm going to delete it, okay?
Yes.
All right, and then there's, there's real no change on the highway, is that, no? Okay, let me go to the next. And so the same thing, I'm gonna delete this comment.
Yup.
I'll go to next. And the same thing here, delete that comment. Okay, and now we have some additional language here.
Board of Selectmen needs to be capitalized.
The same thing that we had before, then?
This just makes it clear that the, the rate will be set by the board. Obviously, it's, it's, it's sort of like the tax rate, right? So there's a process where the board votes on that. We want to make sure that the board has the ability to vote the tax rate, just like, or the, the water rates, just like the commissioners do.
So I'm going to accept it?
If the board is, will, is, it feels that's appropriate.
Yeah, I do.
I think so.
Yup.
Okay, and then there's another, this is another one, go ahead, Kevin. It's just clarifying language, correct?
It's just clear, additional language is to make sure it's crystal clear.
I'm gonna accept that?
That's right.
Do you just wanna change the verbiage above that we just accepted from blue to black?
Did I miss that? I'm sorry.
Gotta go up.
Gotta go down.
I'm sorry.
Not that far.
Not that far.
Way out of place here. Go, go, go. Goodness. Wait a second.
You're up at about, what, twenty?
You're close right now.
Twenty-second, twenty-first? That's a big jump.
We can go back to it if it's, you know, hard to get to.
We're gonna get there. What was your point?
It's in blue still above, if you go up just a tiny bit. Right there.
Right there, yes, yes.
And just, yeah, more there, too.
Come on. What, come on? And is there another place?
I think that was it.
That was it, I think.
Just one place, okay. All right. And so. So Lauren said either was, I think she said this is fine, right?
The or, she said, she prefers or, but it's an opinion.
Didn't make a difference, right?
It was fine.
It was fine.
Okay. Let me just do that next. Okay. And so the next one, okay, these, so these are some additional changes to that.
Here it reads better.
Okay with that?
Yeah, you got through the highway department, yeah.
So this section five here, Section Five, the recommendation, we talked, she had issue with saying not having a firm date. She thought there might be some issues with that at the, with the General Court. So she said that the language should read, this Act shall take effect January one, two thousand twenty-one, which was originally the language that was put in there. So that, that was her recommendation on that one.
So what are we putting in?
It, this Act shall take effect January one, two thousand twenty-one. Think that alliance.
Reject what, what Lauren said, right?
The comment, yeah.
Change it, yes.
We're gonna go back to our original wording, right?
Yeah.
There it is.
We're gonna take out the or later then.
Yup. Boy.
Light on your feet there, Dick.
Giving me a hard time, man, sorry.
We still have some above, where your cursor is.
Yeah, looking for twenty-one.
Yeah.
Getting closer. Right there, right there.
That's where we were.
Yeah, so no, so it's correct the way it is, right?
No, take on January twenty-one.
That's correct.
Will take effect on January first.
Take effect on, I got you.
And Dick, another very small change up above.
Yup.
Under Section E at the top, it's an extra space, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're ready?
Ready for next.
Is, is this all right?
I think so.
Yeah, she just added the word in addition.
Okay.
And then this one, she, she made some edits on this one. She saw Exhibit B, recommended this be the, the language for the explanation.
I, I read this through much better than, than was there. I, I felt comfortable with it. Does anybody have a problem with accepting the explanation here?
Looks good.
Looks good.
I like it, very good.
And then just some clarifying words in Article twenty-seven.
Can I accept those?
Yup. Yes.
Okay, and then we deleted this because we put it up into third.
That's correct.
That's the whole thing.
Now, Dick, my question is the highlighted numbers, do we remove the highlights?
I, I would not, only because FinCom's, with the hundred and fifty-nine thousand that we removed out of the capital, that money will have to go somewhere, likely one of these stabilization funds. So tomorrow, we'll, we'll have a clarification and before.
There's a number there, it's just pay attention, it may change, okay, good.
Okay, so I'm just gonna update the number here then for the, because he took that one out. And then. This, oh, so this again is that, the, the comment, I'm going to reject that. And we're, we're left now with this, this, what we're gonna call this, is this gonna be called five-two?
Probably.
Yeah, it should.
Yup, five-two is it.
Yup.
And then just five-point-two, doesn't need five-point-two-oh.
Five-point, is that good, okay?
And change the date. There you go, got it.
Is that okay?
Yup.
Should I save that as five-two then, is that okay?
Yup.
Yes, please do.
It's good for me.
Dick, would you please send that to Kevin? And Kevin, when, assuming we approve this, then ask if you would send it out to us as the final approved version?
Absolutely.
Obviously share with the FinCom.
Mr. Gant, just for, with some of the edits, there is a couple of the formatting items that either you or I can work through. I know you've, you've worked, you've helped in the past, just, we can work through that offline.
Okay.
Okay.
Does that name look all right to folks? It is, right?
It's good.
Yes, it does.
It's okay.
Dick, thank you very much, if you'd unshare your screen. I'll get back to looking at other things, that was excellent, that, great example of how Zoom worked really pretty well. So we have discussed, gone through the annual town meeting, we want to go through the special town meeting. We do, right?
Okay.
That's version two-point-one of the.
Yeah, two-point-one, from May fourth.
The only edit that was made on this was I took out the word auditorium, and I will now change Mascanomic Regional School District instead of High School.
Not instead of, we did both, Mascanomic Regional School, and then you can, you did high school for the annual town meeting. You had Mascanomic Regional School District, one line, and then you had High School, two lines below that on its own line, and then twenty Endicott Road, Boxford, Mass.
So two-point-one.
The final version says Mascanomic Regional School District.
Right, correct, but it also has high.
Take out auditorium.
High school.
Do you want high school in there? Sorry.
Well, you have it on the other one, why not put it on this one?
I don't, I think we removed that, did we not?
No, we kept it.
You did.
You left the high school in there.
We probably shouldn't, because it's unclear when you just say high school. It is the regional, it is the regional school district.
I would prefer to take.
At that address, period.
I would prefer to take high school out. And put high school on a line or two below, then it will be the same as for the ATM warrant. So insert after the word Mascanomic Regional School, put district and a carriage return. I don't know who has this up and can do it. Kevin, you got that?
I'll make sure that the ATM's the same as the STM, and I have.
You make the STM the same as the ATM, we'll be all set.
Mascanomic Regional District, space, High School.
Just make them the same and we'll be all set.
Endicott Road, Boxford, Mass.
Dick and I were saying, take the word high school out.
Yeah, I, I think you wanna take the word high school out.
Then we're gonna have to go back to the other one, because it's in the ATM.
I know.
Yeah, I kind of think high school's a specific building, and it should be there.
I would leave it in too, because there is the middle school.
They may not know where the district is. For them, the district is Middleton, Boxford, and Topsfield. I think a location in the district, which happens to be their headquarters, is appropriate, and both the Field House and the auditorium are considered part of the complex. The irony is that the auditorium is in the middle school, and the Field House is on the middle school side, so you could put, middle, high, high school and middle school could put down if you wanted.
Isn't it better to just leave it as a regional school district at that address?
I don't think it's gonna make a whole lot of difference. I like putting a particular location, but I'm fine with that.
Was that clear, Kevin?
I'll make sure they match.
There we go.
I'll make sure they match. So if it's, it, Mascanomic Regional School District, twenty Endicott Road, Boxford, Mass, or Mascanomic Regional High School District, I'm sorry, Mascanomic Regional School District, High School, then third line, twenty Endicott Road, Boxford, Mass.
Yeah.
Fact of the matter is, there's one auditorium. You could say Mascanomic Regional High School District Auditorium.
We, we're not gonna have the auditorium anymore, because it may have to be the Field House.
I, I, I think, I think we should leave it open, because it, it may not be.
Well, that's right, you, you may want to go to the Field House, that's true.
It's fine, I'm okay. So, so as we move on through this, I see, I'm just looking here at the, I don't need that anymore.
Surprise us, Kevin.
All right, you got it. I promise you'll match.
Kevin, what you're saying is that what we approved a week ago for two-point-one is exactly the same, except for the part that we just spoke about, those three lines.
That is correct.
Change from what we voted before, so we're all clear on that. It should become two-point-two with the change without auditorium or whatever in it.
I agree.
It's the same. We're all set.
So we're com, we're comfortable on that?
Yes.
What I would like to do, that said, is entertain a motion from the board to, as outlined, for the acceptance of the ATM and STM warrants for the year. Mr. Gant, would you care to read that?
I motioned to accept the twenty-twenty annual town warrant and the twenty-twenty special town warrants, as discussed, liberated, and approved, and agreed to on May eleventh, two thousand twenty.
Wait a second. Boy, did you just second?
Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm gonna jump into a roll call vote, and I'm gonna begin with Mr. Jackson.
All right.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
The motion to approve the warrants passes unanimously, and I thank you all on that. That said, I would like to move on to Selectmen's Updates. Mr. Jackson, do you have anything to share?
You don't, no, I have not, I, I have one comment I'd like to make. We are getting closer and closer to June twenty-third, and more and more issues are coming up with, with June reopening and later. We've gotta start thinking about, talking about whether or not we can really hold a town meeting on June twenty-third.
I think Kevin will probably be giving an update on that, he's been having a number of discussions.
Without doubt.
Um, Lynn, any?
Um, no, just to, to mention, as Gretchen had said, I'm, I'm part of that group that's working on the activities that could be held for the graduating seniors. So next week at our meeting, there'll be another ask for permission coming before the board, relative to some individual student flags. It's like a little pendant with each student's name that would be put in the same location as the four-by-eight banner, that's still being put together, but it's tentatively on the agenda for next Monday. I have to get the details over to Deb.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gant, any?
I have no additional comments.
Okay, and I have none either, so I would like to turn this to the town administrator for his report, Mr. Aratunian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Board. So I'll start with COVID-19 and provide an update on that. You know, this is a, a week out from when the stay-in-place advisory and the nonessential business closures order are set to expire on the eighteenth of May. So we're, I say we, myself, the team, other town administrators who I'm speaking with, our health agent and her network, are watching closely to see what the governor's recommendations will come, and will plan accordingly. One of the things we're talking about right now, we've been working on, starting last week into this week, is a reopening plan for our municipal, for our town buildings. And again, speaking with other town administrators, there are some that are gonna be opening on the nineteenth, there are others that are postponing their opening and being a little creative around what that looks like. You know, we're, we, the team that's working through this right now, are trying to be very, you know, our first priority is always the, the health of our, our constituents and the health of our employees. And right now, things are working pretty well from an operational standpoint, with the remote working, but we'd like to start phasing at some point after we have the order opening up our doors in a, in a way that protects our, our, our staff, but also the people who come and visit us to do business. We still want to encourage people to do, you know, work remotely if they can, the public with us, that is, when it comes to paying bills, et cetera. So work in progress, but we have a good group of people working through that, and we'll have some more guidance with the reopening plan. But we're working also with the COVID on the website. Vice Chair Bermudez and I were speaking last week on that and trying to make it a little more readable. There's been a lot of really great information put on there, and I do want to thank Wendy Hansberry, Sue Winslow, and more recently Donna Rich for the efforts in organizing and putting the material up. But we're gonna try to make sure, with all the material that comes out, want to make sure that it's, it's in a readable fashion, so we're working through that. And just really wanted to say a thank. And just really wanted to say thank you to, especially to people on the line right now, our two chiefs, Chief Hobbie and Chief Collins Brown. They're working tirelessly, you can see they're both in their offices still this evening, and they probably be there anyway, not just for the board meeting, because there's been a lot of work happening on our public safety front, keep people safe in the community, so thank you to both of them and their teams for their efforts, among many others. Some of the efforts that we've made recently, Chief Hobbie and I talked about some of the public safety issues with some of the nice weather days and people parking. We have had a lot of constituents reach out to us with complaints around the safety around parking. Some of the areas, Asbury Street, near Bradley Palmer, High Street, the trail, rail trail, and Canoe Landing, Juniper Lane, Bear Hill Road, the entrance to Pie Brook Park, Ipswich Road at the Canoe Landing, Ipswich Line. So this past weekend and going forward, we put up some, some temporary parking limitations there as a public safety priority. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware of that as well. The Bork Road Race, which was approved by the Board of Selectmen for permit to use Copper Mine Road as part of that race, that has been canceled. It's actually a virtual race now, everyone's asked to run their race separately, but to continue to participate if they choose to do so, so they're getting creative with it, but it's, it's the right thing to do considering the circumstances. And then specifically, to Selectmen, Jackson's point, there's been a lot of conversation recently around town meeting and the election. And what we're working on right now is an ad hoc group, a working group, made up of the moderator, the chiefs, Wendy, our health agent, our town clerk, myself, and a few others, to really think about all of the logistics that will go into those items. And, and it's, it's amazing when you sit down and start talking about it. Includes how we're gonna put the tables, the long way versus the short way for people to go to. Includes maybe purchasing protective glass so that the, the people who are volunteering on the other side, when they do the check-in, have a layer of protection. It's having masks available at the entrance for people. It's having people, people usher people in and keeping people six feet apart. It's marking in the gymnasium or the fieldhouse in the bleachers, marking tape six feet apart or seven or so feet apart, and have marked areas where people can sit. Those are the types of minute details we have to think through to make sure that we do it right and do it safely. And we're working with other communities and exchanging ideas constantly. I talked to more than a couple of town administrators just today about what they're thinking of doing. So we're all kind of in a similar place, a holding pattern, trying to understand, are we gonna be ready based on the governor's recommendations and based on, you know, keeping our, our people safe, what that might look like, but we're planning nonetheless, so that we're prepared to keep people safe during that event. So we'll have that group that work here, I think it'd be great if we had a Board of Selectmen representative on that group, that working group, as we work through these details. So just something to keep in mind, I'll probably be sending out an email tomorrow that I've already drafted, that I'll send out to everybody on that group, inviting them to join us for a Zoom call to discuss some of these logistical items. Another item that we just, we touched on very briefly last meeting was the printing of the warrant. And some of the communities around us are doing it a little differently this year. The correctional facilities typically print our warrants, and the correctional facilities have been hit very hard with the COVID-19 and infection rates, and so there's been some hesitation to, to utilize that. What some communities are doing are sending postcards out rather than the full warrant to their registered voters. We looked hard at our bylaws, I don't think we have the ability to do that as it currently reads. And so I did want to at least make you aware, because you might hear some of the other communities are doing that, but I think that it's, for this year's purposes, we, we certainly have some limitations if we wanted to be creative in that sense. But that being said, with printing those warrants, we'll still come up, we're still gonna be, follow best practices and come up with ways that we can make sure that those warrants that go to the public are, are, I guess, put to the side for a period of time to make sure if there's any kind of contamination there, left to the side for a period of time to reduce any type of risk of handling them. But that is something that we're working through as well. We don't have the specific details, but I do know the postcard idea of something that was floated is not likely to be something we can do this year, unfortunately. But we are gonna make sure whatever it is we, we do do, it is in line with our bylaws, and it does keep everybody safe. One of the things we're also talking about right now is sending everyone an absentee ballot or two, based on how many people are registered in your household. That way, for the election purposes, people who might hesitate to come to a, a large gathering, they have an opportunity to still participate in electoral process, so it's something we're, we're working on right now. And something that Beth Willis is, is taking the lead on that front. I did mention at the last meeting, a spending freeze and hiring freeze, that's gone into place. Working closely with the department heads, who have been fantastic, by the way, they completely understand the situation we're in and the unknowns going forward relative to our revenues. And it's been a very collaborative process on that front, so I just want to let everyone know that we're working through that, and we're being very judicious with spending at this point in time. Today, the evaluations went out to all the department heads for this year's evaluation process. This time of year, as I understand it, is when those go out, so that's continuing as well. Earlier, the announcements, the hours for the summer were updated, or, or, were spoken to, I will mention and emphasize that on Monday nights, we will be open until 7:00 PM, once we are open. And that's a late night, and that's purposeful, we want to make sure people who might otherwise, otherwise be able to come to town hall because of work obligations or family obligations, there's a couple extra hours in the afternoons into the evenings for people to do business here if they choose to. So we're hoping to see, you know, some new faces possibly come through the building, which would be great. I, I just emphasized another thing I mentioned last week, but I'll mention again, online payments permits are coming soon. We've worked with the vendor, we're getting the contract executed, we'll get that up and running ASAP, and I'm very excited for that. It's a long time coming, and it's, it makes a lot of sense for improving the way we do business. Some really good news, DEP approved the reduced coverage of the water treatments facility late last week. And that's, that's gonna significantly reduce a lot of our OT obligations that we've had last year, and significant savings hopefully this year, so that's some really great news. I'll also say Gary Wild's, our new highway superintendent, led the team that paved Canterbury Hill Road like last week, and that was a huge success. We've got a couple emails from residents on that street thanking the team for the work they did. So I just want to say, great work by Gary and his team by making that happen, as well as one of our highway commissioners on the call tonight, Mr. Jackson, for his support in those efforts, so thank you. And I'll just finish by just saying, you know, I'm just very thankful and grateful for the team we have here. Everybody's working very hard and doing fantastic work for the town of Topsfield. And if anyone needs anything from the board or from the general public, don't hesitate to reach out to us, we're still open for business. We're here to help, thank you.
That's it?
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
I call public's attention to some of the thank you notes and other comments, and some in the correspondence section. If there isn't any particular desire by one of the board members to discuss any of those, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Gant, second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Bermudez, I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer, aye, pass unanimously. The meeting is hereby adjourned, and thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
Does FinCom have a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you.